Yes, let's have call to order please and the pledge of allegiance. Roll call please.
Clark, Fish, Housman, Parsons, Wakefield, Mayor Beasley.
We have a quorum, approval of the agenda. I may have a motion please. Motion by Parsons, second by Housman to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, we're moving on to visitors and timed items. I believe we have some folks here from the Water Conservation Committee to present a budget request. Yep, we're going to put you on first so you don't just sit here for the whole meeting.
Check. I'm assuming it'll be cash for me. That's not good. Let's try it again. That seems better. Ish. I'm Kevin Smith, I'm here representing the Water Conservation Subcommittee of the Water Development Committee with our 2019 budget request. And I was just looking at my notes and when the last time I was in front of the full council was back in early June. And we were talking about some of the proactive things we had planned and things we had recently accomplished, including participating in the Brandon Loyalty Day Parade, where I think we handed out a number of magnets with the lawn watering schedule on them, along with some coloring books for the youth. And of course, the, you know, feature piece was the bathroom stool that we had, which admittedly, I think we had out in terms of public information. You know, we wanted to engage the public at that time, just getting them thinking about water conservation. And certainly, since then, we've seen, I think, the need for additional conservation measures. We've had, I think, some success with the lawn watering schedule, even having to go into the yellow stage of conservation measures. So at least we've got that in place. I think citizens are getting the message. And we're very grateful as a Subcommittee for the $7,500 that you budgeted in 2018. Some of those funds have gone towards the magnets, towards the coloring books, the stool, the banner that we have now that's permanent, we'll be using in the upcoming Crazy Days event as well. So with the rest of 2018, we're looking at buying additional magnets, you know, some additional conservation devices that will have a long shelf life. So if we don't use them this year, we can use them next year. That brings us to 2019. So our budget request for 2019 is for $20,000. And those funds would be targeted primarily towards outdoor water conservation devices. We would like the city to consider enacting a, or having ordinance changes to allow plumbing retrofit or a plumbing reimbursement program, primarily for outdoor uses. So that would be, that would be rain sensors, lawn sensors, or a weather station if a citizen wants to retrofit their irrigation system and install some technology that will override it when it rains. So we've done some research, we've looked at what the city of Sioux Falls has used, and we think there's great gains to be made in outdoor lawn water conservation for 2019. So that's where we would target those funds. And we don't have the ordinances written, we don't have the dollar amounts for you, but at an average of $80 per rebate, and let's say that's for an irrigation timer, for those systems, because people are having to get used to the odd even lawn watering schedule. And if you have an irrigation system that's older and doesn't accommodate the odd even system, those can be retrofitted. So how do incentivize? How do incentivize our citizens to actively be engaged in lawn water conservation is through that reimbursement method. So we think over the course of the next couple of months, if there's interest and support from the city council, that we prepare the ordinances, we prepare the language to bring in front of you so that by January 1st of 2019, new budget year, that the funds are available as well as the program. Because there is going to, you know, we need to have the applications ready, come up with some dollar amounts. And one thing I would like to point out is, we've talked about certain brands, certain vendors, but my recommendation would be that we have this be vendor neutral, so that not specifying you must buy from this vendor for this type of equipment, that we allow free market to, you know, dictate where any individual homeowner goes to buy these, buy these devices. So again, it's a reimbursement basis. The citizen, the resident water customer would have to purchase the irrigation timer, the rain sensor, or the weather station. The city would provide a reimbursement back. And maybe that would simply be an offset from your next water bill. So no money actually changes. Hands might be a little easier to administer that way. But this really does fit in with our overall main purpose. If you remember back to when I was in front of you in June, I came with three messages. One was education. I think we've done that with the lawn watering schedules that we've put out, with all of the information that's on the website, continues to get, you know, talked about here and elsewhere. Secondly, the enforcement, and this falls mainly on Raleigh's shoulders, if there are individuals who are not adhering to the lawn watering schedule, to call City Hall, Raleigh will go out and investigate. And we've got the door hangers and the follow-up enforcement that's sometimes necessary for those folks who just choose not to adhere. And the third thing is why are we here tonight? Is the incentives, providing our citizens with a financial incentive to participate in lawn watering conservation. So we'd really appreciate your continued support, whatever level you feel is appropriate for the water conservation program. And, you know, we hope that by this time in 2019, things have been a great success. We've got even more voluntary compliance with the lawn watering schedule and our conservation efforts. So that's, that's my sales pitch for tonight, if you have any questions.
So Kevin, you haven't...
I was gonna say, you might want to turn that one off while we're...
No, that's, I know, that's a lot. So...
Sorry, I apologize. I came over here to set up and the speakers were buzzing. I had Midstates Audio come here and the equalizer is broken, so they're working. However, I didn't realize it was going to do that. So we'll just have to hard bear with it tonight.
They're loud. So there's some money left over still in that budget for this year in that $10,000, Brian?
18 was $7,500. We have about $4,800 left in the budget. But again, we'd like to stock up on some of the things we know are going to have a long shelf life. And, you know, things like, what are you going to do next year for water conservation? Having a rain barrel painting contest with all of the schools in town. And then raffling those off as part of the Loyalty Day celebration. Maybe we'll have one of those in the back of Trudy's truck instead of a toilet. But, you know, we are thinking forward a year in advance, focusing on outdoor water use, because I think as we've all seen this summer, that's where our greatest concern is, and that's where our greatest gains stand to be for at least the foreseeable future.
Alright, so as you know, I wasn't very pleased with the money that we gave you guys, but you know, I'm glad that it has come to light. I'm not, I wasn't thrilled with the toilet idea, and because we're talking about outdoor conservation, and I don't really know what the toilet had to do with that, but I've expressed that to other people on the Water Conservation Committee as well. I have actually never seen anything that you guys have ever sent out. So to me, I'm just like, I'm not sure, are you just targeting the schools? Because those that don't have children in school anymore, how is the rest of the group supposed to know about them? So if you're just targeting like the schools and these magnets, which I've never seen, I guess I have a problem with that. So when we talk about outdoor conservation, I'd rather see the money go to this kind of thing than to more magnets, or more coloring books, or whatever it is. And again, I know it's your guys' first year, but for those of us who don't have kids in school anymore, I saw nothing. And so if we're going to give you money, which we probably will, I want to see something like this put into place rather than the other.
I know another idea that came up in the committee was the permanent signs on the outreaches of town. That would be like street signs that would, that would be permanent there for years and years, that would indicate where you are a water conserving community or something to that nature. Would that be in 18's budget, or...
That would be out of this year's budget, and I'm confident we can work with Raleigh to get the signs made.
Any other questions for Kevin or the committee? Thanks, thanks for your time, all you guys. I know you've spent a lot of time on this, we appreciate it. Are there any other visitors or visitors under our timed items that would like to visit with the council?
I did not hear his name, I made credit, Kevin, because I got in here and told him he was totally involved in the project.
Oh, this is Kevin Smith. He's on our Water Conservation Committee Subcommittee. Sure. Anybody else? Okay, we're going to move on to contracts then, proposal for well number eight construction.
Okay, last meeting, we had some recommendations from the Water Development Committee. And so we put together five proposals based on those recommendations. And the first one on the list there is about the hardest one to explain. Well number eight, we were already under contract with Stockwell to do this along with the HML and the collection line. In that contract, that was for $175,500. And we have about $58,000 left for that contract. Stockwell came back with a proposal for a little over $40,000. We just met and talked a few things over. We are proposing an amendment to that proposal, about $8,500 for bidding documents, because we did build number eight, and we now have to redo that. Also, we wanted to add in the gamma log, which adds about another $5,000. So that comes up to $13,500. Do you want to add to that, John?
Okay, so with the well eight, so this $8,500 and the $5,000 for the rebidding, that's both for the well eight and the transmission line, or just well eight? Okay, very good. Yep, and that includes the gamma log, so we can selective screen. That may change scope and cost a little bit if we do selective screening, is that correct? Okay, very good. And based on information that we received and we learned about in the Water Conserv, Water Development Committee, I'll get the name right one of these times, the gamma log was something that would have helped us learn a lot about well seven and potentially reduce the radium, because basically what we're trying to do is pick the good spots to take the water from, if you think about the depth. So it definitely has the opportunity to help us really reduce that radium. Is that how you understand it too, Tammy?
Right, yep.
The $13,000 is on top of the $42,000?
No.
The $13,000? Instead of. Oh, I like that much better.
So our potential, sorry, John, our potential risk for this going up in any amount, obviously the 13.5 covers this through, we're going to call it bidding. And is there some construction admin for task number three on that as well, or none? Just bidding, correct?
Right. With the existing contract, we have about, they spent about a third of their construction admin fee, which they did a third of the project, so...
Okay, very good. Do we, Brian, need an amended proposal, or can we make a motion based on those amendments?
Just a motion with amendment of 13.5.
13.5.
Okay, so I will make a motion to move forward with the project for well number eight. The new amended amount for the proposal is $13,500. To be clear, that would include the well eight and the transmission line. And it also includes an additional gamma log to ensure that we're getting clean water.
Okay, so we have a motion by Wakefield, second by Parsons, to approve this amended contract. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good.
Okay, well number nine, that one is for $31,075. And one thing to point out there is there's about $5,000 in testing expenses. And then there is a 72-hour test, and that's what takes up a lot of the fee. Correct, John?
This one, we're just studying it.
I'll make a motion to approve well number nine for $31,075.
So we've got a motion by Clark, second by Housman, to approve the proposal for well number nine development. Any discussion?
Tammy, did you have any feedback on this? Any concerns, or were you looking at potentially doing any kind of other proposals that you'd like to review before we move forward with this?
I don't think so, not with well number nine.
Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good. We're done with well number nine development.
Okay, the next one would be the water treatment plant filter media replacements for $24,580. A lot of this one is kind of putting the plans together. And then there's also about 74 hours of construction admin in there. And a lot of that is just the process of taking it out and putting it back in. There's...
It's going to be about a, an hour, four, eight week process. And it's basically just making sure that they're, well, going to have direct requirements as well as making that back. It's going to be a process.
Okay, we have a motion from Housman, second by Clark, to approve the proposal for the water treatment plant filter media replacement. Any discussion?
So this was bid as the IMAR filter media, correct?
Correct.
Or equivalent equal, I assume, because we're not going to sole source it, but so...
It's actually cheaper than, IMAR is actually thus cost now than green sand.
Oh, great.
So it's actually, and it gets us, you know, our radium removal, the radium removal a lot of us want more, a little better removal.
Sure.
That's why we call it the IMAR instead of green sand.
Perfect.
Could you turn this way and repeat what you said?
Sure. The filter media that is proposed in the replacement is a different product. It's a proprietary product. It's basically a sand that is rock, sand, that it actually goes in the bottom of the filter, so that that helps clean up the different contaminants off of the water. So it helps clean the water, is what it does. So we're proposing a IMAR material instead of a green sand in the filter. Does that make sense? Sorry.
It's just different brand names is kind of the key.
It's just, yeah, it's still rock. The replacement rock was rock. It's just a different type.
Thank you for turning around when you need time.
Yep.
Please, thank you. You can see the color by here, and so I have one good area.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on to Aspen Boulevard Water Main Loop.
So the next two, I think are important to keep separate projects, but maybe we could bid them at the same time. The Aspen Boulevard one, if you saw in your bid package, there's actually two options. And the only reason for that is on option one, there are a lot of existing utilities through that side. So we will have to do a survey first to see if we can do the option one or the option two.
There should be an exhibit on the backside of each of the proposals, like kind of illustrate the two different options.
So the anticipated cost increase to do option two, just the directional drilling is probably going to raise the cost quite a bit, right?
That's the difference in cost. There's no utilities on the south side, but I know the north side is litter wood utility. There's a lot of utilities in that north ditch.
Yeah, so it might be horse a piece, it might be horse a piece by the time you pay the premium to dig where the utilities are. Do you have any potential easement issues with that?
We're going in the ditch within the right of way.
Okay.
We're going to maintain, we're going to put the new water main right in the ditch.
So that'll be right of way.
So within the existing right of way.
Okay. And then that, does it change the bid amount, or the proposed amount on what job should we go with at this point?
No. Our fees are going to remain the same. Basically, we're going to investigate the north half, north side first, and then make the decision at that point. If we can't, we don't feel it's feasible to go on the north side, we'll just put the water main on the south side. We've estimated that cost of the project to be about $120,000, as you can see on that exhibit, on the south side, $120,000 on the north side.
And so why do we feel this looping is necessary here in this part?
All of our looping is necessary, it's just that we're trying to tick off some of those higher priorities. This one and Redwood Boulevard, this Aspen Boulevard and Redwood Boulevard, the one that you're going to see next, are very important ones that we feel are necessary to get our looping kind of in order. There's others that are still coming, but we're going to work those in.
So the intent would be that if we approve both, we would bid them as a package and then tabulate it so it's separate?
Right.
Is that kind of the plan? Okay.
In Redwood, there was previous discussions about putting that in with the storm sewer project along there. I think it's more convenient or better if we put these two together as one bid package and do that one separate.
So the hope is we only have one move fee instead of two?
Exactly.
I like it. Very good.
So Brian, question, have we determined with all these that we're approving, we're just paying cash, we're borrowing?
Some of these smaller projects, we can pay cash for. The IMAR is $135,000 probably, so that one we can pay out cash. The estimated cost for this one's probably $150,000, $175 a year. So we can pay these out cash. When we were looking at the rates and stuff, there are anything less than a half million dollars, we're proposing cash. I do propose Aspen Boulevard water main.
Okay, so we have a motion from Housman, second by Wakefield, to accept the proposal for the Aspen Boulevard Water Main Loop and the Redwood Boulevard Water Main Loop. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good.
Audrey, it's very nice to be back.
So you're going to include all of these in the, in our rate study?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll all be in there. Okay, okay.
You can totally get those. For all that homework, thanks Tammy. Really appreciate it. Definitely makes things go smoother when we can go through those dialogues. You know, and thank you for taking the time, John, tonight to meet with Tammy ahead of time. That makes it go that much smoother as well, so.
Moving on to the resolution.
City Attorney Marshall typed this up for emergency water restrictions in the future, similar to what we had last weekend. Hopefully it won't happen again. But this sets out the fees, surcharges for offenses during those water emergencies. Very similar, same fees as to what we have with...
Would we want this to be more stringent than a standard?
That's, that's up to the council. I was just thinking for consistency. But if you want to change that, you certainly can.
I would like to see us discuss it being more stringent. I mean, if we're in dire straits where our water is literally to the point where we are questioning fire suppression or drinking water, I mean, this is, this is a bigger deal than watering on the wrong day of the week.
So I guess the other part of it, you know, when it comes to this, is the enforcement side. On the restriction side, the enforcer is Raleigh, and that's the only enforcer. When we get into this situation, I don't know if we need to have some means and method to make more enforcers, but kind of like Dana said, you know, this is a little bit different situation, and, you know, we'll look for something there. Also, I did notice that, Brian, you've got the authority to make that change so that we don't have to try to have an emergency meeting, so I think that's good. Do we need to, would it make sense to have Raleigh listed as another person that can do that if he were not available?
That's fine with me.
You know, in this situation, you know, if you're out of town and Raleigh needs to make the call, I want him to feel like he's empowered to make that call. I don't know what your feedback is, Raleigh, but in this situation, it's, you probably made the decision anyways, but just to streamline the authority to put us into this ban, if you will. So I don't know what the other council thinks, but...
I'm fine with, of course, Raleigh making the decision if Brian's unavailable. I'm also fine with this, with this resolution. How many tickets have we given out?
Actual violations?
Mm-hmm.
That was, that was...
Not in the emergency, though, that was...
No, that wasn't in the emergency. I haven't done anything with the emergency because the resolution wasn't written.
I'd be okay with biting them a little harder than this, because if it is an emergency, it is an emergency, and it's been on, it was on the media, I mean, it was on like TV, it was all over the place.
So you have a suggestion?
I would double it. I mean, when you're in a construction zone, fines are doubled. I mean, this is, this is really significant compared to just the standard watering of the lawn day. I wouldn't give them five times to get it right either, if we're in an emergency.
We can amend those numbers to whatever, ever you want to.
So would you change the first offense?
Third day's worth, you have three one days in a month, and if irrigation is set to go off and then your van would happen to fall on that day, it may still try and go off, so I'd maybe give one notice. One notice and then a fine.
So, just to run this by everyone, so first offense, written warning, second offense, 200, third offense, three, or 400, and then the fourth offense, shut off the water, so take away that fourth offense, so we ratchet up quicker? Does that make sense to everyone, or, I mean, it's just a discussion point? I don't know that you're ever going to get there.
Makes sense, but I don't agree with it, so, you know, that's just my feeling. We haven't had any problems, we haven't given out any offenses, right? We haven't given out any for this?
During the ban.
Not during the ban.
Other outside of that, the watering restriction.
Yes, you've given out one, so I think it's too stringent. I agree with this one that we have written up.
Would you, would you like the amendment, Brandon City Administrator or Public Works Director? In there? And your motion is to leave it as the fines as written?
A motion to keep it as written?
But also authorize for Raleigh.
Yeah, including to authorize the Public Works Director to declare ban. So do we have a second on the original proposal?
Question for Gil, I mean, is there a...
I'd be in favor of after the third offense, shut them off. I mean, I'd be all right with that, but, you know, don't give them five offenses, but, you know, 100, 200 bucks, 300 bucks, it's not going to change their mind. If you shut them off, shut off their water, that's going to change their mind. So I would say after the third offense, turn them off, so that would be my compromise.
What's going, what does it cost to get it restarted if they're shut off?
50 bucks.
If you want to amend that, Joe, I'll second it, to show the fourth offense as a shut off.
All right, so I'm going to amend it again. So, resolution 0918, I am going to amend it to show that the fourth offense would be a water shut off, and also to amend that Brian and Raleigh has the authority to call it.
So we have a motion by Hausmann, second by Wakefield, to amend it to include the Public Works Director, and then on the fourth offense, shut them off, and leave the dollar amounts the same as written in the ordinance. Okay? Any more discussion? Okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One of the things I just wanted to know is...
Yeah, we can grant exceptions.
Yeah. They didn't need an exception. I mean, there was no reason to put the...
We have had some folks that have called and have delayed things, whether it's sod, power washing houses, et cetera, during the, during the emergency. So some folks listen. Nothing in here that says we have to grant one.
Yeah, we don't have to grant.
She says... They can certainly apply for it, but it's up to the Administrator and the Public Works Director to grant an exception, because we'll change that as well, but...
So I see where you're going with that, Kim, and I think, you know, I agree that there's a lot of things that, you know, when I saw the post that said that, you know, there's still exemptions, that kind of shook me the wrong way, too. If we're in a ban for an emergency reason, there's no, no need to do any exemptions, and that's something that would be more of a policy based. I don't know that we would put it in this resolution, but maybe I'm wrong. That's something that we can definitely talk to Lisa about, and if we need to make an amendment for that, then we can talk to Lisa, so, but I'll take note of that to ask Lisa about that.
So any more about any of this before we move into the budget? Are we moving on? Moving on? Okay.
Moving on to the budget, we recovered the revenue side at the last work session, so we'll start on expenditures, council. Which would be page 14 of your hard copy. Included in there, professional services, that's typically the force account for the engineers, and then we've got the Dakota Resources contract in there as well. Publications, we bumped up, we're starting to see more publications that we're doing. Contingency, that's what we transfer out at the end of the year if we need to. Stays the same. Mayor, no major changes. One thing in wages, we tie those to the CPIU every year effective June 1st, and that was 2.9%.
So publications, is that, like textedly, is that what that would be then? That's in there? Okay, thank you.
City Administrator, the big thing there is a proposal to purchase and replace the van. State bids this year for 2018, Dodge Car and Caravan is 21,872 with a $200 delivery charge, a Chevy Malibu is 17,429, and a Chevy Impala is 20,747. So, and we would typically buy these items off the state bid.
So what do we do with it?
We would surplus it. We could. There's had some pretty good repairs in it this past year. It's, uh, '06?
'06.
'06. Uh, planning and zoning, you talked about upping the meeting fees.
Yeah, I just need, I checked 2010, it was $25, and 2011 is when we bumped it up to $30. 2011. So I just need a consensus if you want to go 35 or 40, so I can change it. 2011.
We'll make those changes on all of the committees. Park Committee is our park committee, we didn't increase anything there because they took over the tree board. Yep. Election for next year, Ward's 1, 2, and the mayor.
Both.
Both.
It'd be both. But it'll be Dana, too.
Yep, and Dana, too. Yep. Because if you remember, we only make the appointment for the next election, and then whoever's elected serves out the term. Professional services, we bumped up 10,000, the bills have been increasing.
So I'm a little crabby about that.
Yeah, I am, too.
I would like to try to manage that resource effectively. Hopefully, we can keep that down. No offense to Lisa, and she knows that, but I'd like to keep that down as much as possible.
Well, and I think, and I know we've talked before, but do we, you know, basically, do we all know the chain of command, so we don't go and use Lisa all the time? Because that does, that, that puts a burn my bonnet. Because going up $10,000 in a year, whereas before it was only $1,000 here, $1,000, you know, 4,000, 4,000. So, yeah, we really need to limit that and limit the resources for her, because she is very valuable, and I don't think she needs to be spending time on trivial things, myself.
Do we have a understanding of what projects she's worked on and what were the key projects? I know the east side water tower land was pretty consuming of her and that kind of thing, so do we have a breakdown of that so we can look at forecasting if we have any potential high-risk projects that we're looking at that we need her to spend time? Another example is Holly, I know she's going to spend time on some of that easement work as we move forward, so just something that it's more forecast based on what she's up to than that kind of thing.
Yeah, as far as what she's got working on, the easements for the Holly project will be done yet this year. We won't bid that project unless we have those easements in place, and we're hoping to bid it in January. That's where we're on track for. And I think there's only one that she's working on currently. The one on the north side of the road, I believe, is taken care of. As far as projects, we don't anticipate a lot, but we've seen our, not project-related legal expenses. Inquiries coming from, from the council to the, to the city attorney.
And I, and I think one thing we all need to be careful of, myself included, is that it should be council questions going to Lisa. I don't know that it's necessarily individual, individual council questions. I should, I think it should be council questions as a whole. And if it isn't, then it probably needs to be run through Brian, and then it goes to Lisa, because I don't think that I should just be able to, at a whim, call Lisa up and have her research a project. In my, in my mind, that's my mind.
Or go to Brian and then the mayor, right? Brian?
Yeah, I, you know, we get, we get a breakdown every month of what Lisa's been working on and what she's billing on a, on a pretty detailed basis. And like I said, the last two or three months, those bills have increased for items that we as staff don't have any input in or didn't know about.
Right, so...
Finance officer, you know, the wages, and we just, we budget purchasing new computer, new computer just about every year in every department, so we rotate those through. Oh, part-time, thank you. We, we, thank you. Forgot about that. We're looking at hiring a part-time receptionist clerk at the front desk. I think the time has come. Answer the phone, you know...
People coming in.
People coming in, helping out, you know, if, if everybody tries to stagger their lunch hours, but there are times if Judy's gone or Christina's gone, you know, we leave a sign up there, hey, if nobody shows up, holler into the back room. So, we think it's time that we, we take a look at least a part-time, part-timer. Good question. We would need to modify that front counter, probably as you come straight in, we would probably put the desk there in some fashion. Probably like 10 to 2, to cover that noon time.
That's our software program that we use for payroll, utility billing, general ledger, everything. We bill it out between water sewer and then in that, it's kind of our overall software for the general fund.
So I have a question for, I guess, Barb, Joe, Brian. So on the overall wages, those increase every year?
Typically, we tie them to the CPI.
So then the wages aren't based on performance, but they're based on an index?
We do a review, performance review, but no, it's currently not. The weight, the, the, January 1st is sort of, we've given a CPI, and then there's step movement on anniversary date.
So have you ever considered doing something different?
We've talked about doing something different on at least the anniversary date.
I mean, has our HR person done any salary surveys, see where we're at?
We're meeting tomorrow.
We're meeting tomorrow morning about it.
Okay. On the salary and wage benefits study.
And is that typical for municipalities, just, I mean, if I don't get a good review, I still get a raise?
Typically, it's all over the board, some places do, some places tie it, some places, you know, if you get a great review, you go up two steps.
I can see that, but if I'm not getting something?
Yep, and some communities do that, if you, if you, well, if you get a below-average review, it's not a good thing, so there would be steps taken to correct.
And along with the salary survey that has been done, have we done a survey on just the overall benefit?
Yep, benefit package is included, wage and benefits.
So, we've got Dennis as well, is that under the Finance Officer?
Nope.
City Administrator. City Administrator, okay, so, I guess that's back pages then, but is there, where's Dennis at? Is he wanting to be retired? Is he wanting to be full-time? Could we be looking at more of a combination of somebody that's a little bit more part-time, that would take the halftime that Dennis is doing and the halftime that this part-time is, and kind of combine it into something that's a little bit more active, that would help you guys more? I'm just kind of thinking aloud here.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see combining what Dennis does, which is primarily development-driven, industrial development primarily, and combining that with a receptionist. I don't see those two together. Dennis hasn't indicated anything about retirement yet. Not interested in full-time, it impacts his social security.
So, you know, for this part-time person, you know, we've had a lot of discussion about how to handle our social media. I know Joe has expertise in that area that we could be drawing on. I used a gal on a contract level when I was running my campaign, that's another option, or is it possible that this person could do some of that?
When I've talked with Julie, HR, that was discussed, that, you know, not just a receptionist position, but maybe some social media skills as well. Julie has been looking at communications director, social media-type positions, so she's got a temporary job description worked up.
And I know that, I talked to Kim Surak a little bit, and they're using the company right above them, and that's been going well, too, so that might be something to think about, how we can transition and utilize resources that are here in Brandon, so as we need to work that out. I don't know what the specifics were from Kim, but I don't know if that's a budget line item or anything like that, but.
Yeah, it's going to kind of depend on, you know, that social media discussion the council's having, as to which, which way we go, and it's, it's open. I mean, do you want to hire full-time, part-timer consultant, at least in the time being, to see, see how it goes? So, we're working on some draft, or some policies from other communities, to see how they're handling it now.
Sure, and I, I don't know what our timeline is on like a new website and that kind of stuff, but those are all things that streamline your job, Brian and Christina, because it can give the ability to automatically apply for stuff on the website, and other communities are doing that, so I don't know if that's something that, obviously, it's not in this part of the budget, but something we need to think about is, is, you know, there's some simple things that we could do to hopefully save some energy on your part by making the website do it for you.
So, under that insurance, are we anticipating an uptick in cost, or have we just not paid all of it yet, under the four-one-four-point-six?
We have, we're, I'm anticipating an uptick, we're starting to cover a few things that we haven't covered in the past, you know, for instance, we've got our new baseball stadium.
Yeah, I reorganized the apartments a little bit, too, and kind of got a spreadsheet on what was golf course, actually, and what was water, and what was sewer. We've also added quite a few things, large ticket items over the last few years, too, so.
And you'll notice when we go through sewer and water, their insurance costs have decreased based on the breakout of the bill.
And does that insurance, you know, we've, we've got an engineer again, so that insurance covers her for errors and omissions, is that correct?
And then our annual audit costs, we do get audited every year. General government buildings. Well, there's one thing that's missing in here, I've reached out to some architects just to get a cost estimate for a space needs study, so I'm still waiting for those numbers, so that will be plugged into this one, this department as well. Depends on if it falls down or not. Basically, the back wall on that building. Because I think, let's say we put a new roof on this one, we did some roof work over on, on the city hall building, painting, made a paint job, if you haven't noticed, on this building. Yep, this wall. No, needs to be painted. No, Raleigh and I have talked about, you know, a temporary fix of asphalt curb, for lack of a better word, up against the building. Yeah, he won't buy me tubes of flex seal. Yeah, I think so, for now. You know, it all depends on how much we want to invest in these two buildings if we, if we move forward with the city hall project. You know, we could do fifty to a hundred a year for these, for these two buildings, pretty easy. Well, that's going to be part of the scoping for that space needs study, where are we going to build it? How much, how much space do we need? We own this. Will a new building with, with, you know, if you think about it, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, what, seven offices currently in city hall, we'd probably need ten, you know, a couple of meeting rooms, council chambers, you know, shared space with the fire, with the police department. Police department, you'd be looking at one, two, three, four, currently four offices, maybe two extra, a squad room that fits, you know, say a dozen officers, adequate storage for evidence, locker room, and then if you're, if you're looking at garages for vehicles. So I don't know what that space is, how big that space is going to be. So we'd have to take a look. Well, and that, that would be something that we need to talk about if we, as we, as we move forward with that project, if we, can we stage it? So, for instance, we tear this part down and build here, and then move over here and build over, so that's one of those things that's going to have to be talked about. We can certainly put it in there, at least a suggestion, number one, how much space, number two, where's a logical place to put it, if this, if this space isn't big enough, and then if this space will work, how do we stage it? And we could, we could certainly put it in there. Well, let's see, it's in here. I agree. Yeah, one-hundred-and-seventy-nine-five projected revenue for the community rooms. Okay. Uh, moving on, Police Administration, Chiefs here.
I do have to apologize on the wages, I think I'm a little off for Budget eighteen. I'm, we had one officer quit on us and one in, and I think I missed a wage on officer, so that's why you see the difference between eighteen and nineteen. And I'm, looking at it a little bit today, too, I might have to go up a little bit, because we have Chief retiring, and we'll have a new Chief come on, so looking at that a little bit, too, we might have an overlap on a Chief for a little bit, so, anyway, I'll let Chief talk now. What's happening?
Yeah.
Were there ever the tunnel or not light people?
No.
Two this year, remember we got one year that?
The Tahoe won't be quite as, quite as much, but we've got, some, some of our vehicles are up over a hundred, a hundred and ten thousand. Up to a hundred and twenty, and at that point, you're dumping money into them all the time to try to keep them up. Front ends start going out.
Did you get your truck yet?
It's sitting in the back.
It's a nice new Chevy truck sitting back here, but it's a quality.
So you do vehicles, do you want trucks, or do you want?
Uh, no, they'll be, no, not the goggles, it'll probably be the Ford X4s, uh, one-four.
So in this budget is the new cameras that you had talked about, where they automatically upload, is that in this budget as well, Chief?
Yes, that would be page two. What this is. What this does, I think forty-one, forty-one and change, forty-one-five, I think, cameras would be, we estimated Messenger one, and then going forward after that, with the cloud storage for the video, and every, under the, ones that we're looking at are from Axon, they're the same ones that built the Taser, and under the close plan, every two-point-five years, the cameras, there'd be a camera upgrade. We also would no longer have to concern ourselves with in-house storage. One of the convenient parts about having it on the cloud is when the state's attorney's office needs a video, we just give them access code to that video, they go in, they pull it up, and it's not a, it's not a proprietary program that they're on, so for those that are working in the state's attorney's office, much easier to deal with than those programs, a lot of different programs have proprietary software, so it just makes it easier for them also. It includes two camera systems instead of one, we would still have in-car cameras, and then the body cameras. Body cameras are something that, obviously, if you watch the national news, they are becoming more and more, almost a standard, rather than, you know, an usual thing. I talked with Aberdeen, Aberdeen has had them for a good number of years, I think they were one of the first ones to get the body cams from, from Axon, and they continue to be very, very happy with them, with them as a company. They're expensive, but that is the technology that's based on this.
Just a quick question on the metro users fee, maybe I don't understand well enough what that is, it looks like the four-year average was thirty-eight thousand, and then it went, jumped up to fifty-eight thousand?
I think every year, I don't have my, my eighteen or seventeen budget in front of me, but you have what you use and what you ask me. I call over there, I get the, the estimate, now last year's budget was fifty-eight, one-eighty-nine, this year's budget is fifty-six, one-ninety-five, so the budget part actually went down, and the way it's been built is it goes off of call volume for the different agencies. So Sioux Falls Police Department has a call volume, Sheriff's Office has a call volume, and they take care of the lion's share of financing above and beyond what nine-one-one fees will, will pay. And, and so, based on that, every nine-one-one piece, they estimate that our cost could be fifty-six, could, could be less than that, depending on, again, how many calls for service that we have, that they answer for us, and, and in theory, it could be higher, you know, if all of a sudden things start heating up here, and we have a higher call volume percentage-wise, than, you know, compared to the other agencies, our, our volume could act, our cost could actually rise. So they have estimated a drop this year, that's, that's possible.
So, Chief, do you feel like, technology-wise and equipment-wise, that we're keeping up with where we need to be? Are we hamstringing you at all?
We're staying current, I think we're, I think we're a lot better than we were ten years ago. Yeah, the other thing on the equipment side that, that we've already been doing is the radio systems are being upgraded, the radios that we're working on, the older old Corollas are, are timing out, and there's P-25s, you have to have, everything's got to be P-25, and don't, don't ask me for a detailed explanation what P-25 is, P-25 is a national or federal standard, that, that everybody has to move to. And part of that was narrowing of all the bandwidths to allow more people to get on. So, with that, we've been replacing, every year, towards the end of the year, we take a look at the budget, we buy as many of the, we've replaced as many of the portable radios that we have, and I think we're close to the end of that, and then we have to switch over the vehicle radios, that we have, we have seven vehicles, so there's seven radios that have to be upgraded, to the new, new radios, and all of that has got to be done by twenty-twenty-two, I think is our, our drop-in point, and, and after that, the radio, if it's not, if it's not up there, then it becomes a brick.
So is that included in the sixty-six?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we've been, we've been budgeting money every year to, rather than coming up on one year where you've got this amount of money that you need to buy, we've got to replace them as we go.
So how short are you of space in the, in your building?
Fire Department, um, we've got the O and M, which is the professional services portion, and then the additional request is capital, uh, truck, truck purchases or equipment purchases. Uh, what we do with, with the Fire Department is it is the same increase as what we get on our tax levy. So two point one CPI and three point two seven growth, is how those numbers change. Three point two seven growth.
And where do you have in here that, don't we pay for a portion of that review?
Yeah, yep.
It's not an audit?
It's a pure review.
Yeah, um...
I, I didn't, because I didn't know if it was continual or on, on a going basis, you guys wanted it done this year. I don't know what...
It'll be ongoing, we'll, we'll put it in there.
So I can add it? You saw my question? Um, I don't know if the rest of you know, so this review did not include any review of processes?
No. I'll have to look at things, Zach, where you, she is getting, um, she does have notes coming, sorry, fine. Um, coming with a little more detail, um, just as far as building and depreciations and equipment and that, and then it does have a note disclosure on kind of how they pay out the, uh, retirement. Um, so there are some notes coming, but it would not have any procedures in there.
I'd be more concerned about the processes, about if I'm carrying a credit card, how that gets authorized. Um, I don't want it to have to go back and ding them for not having a receipt on a truck that they bought in two thousand, but I don't know if Quam can do that.
Well, we'll talk with Quam and Burglin. And get a cost estimate, throw it in.
So are you still, um, half of the cost, is that still where you're at, or are you? Okay.
Building inspections, nothing maintenance, nothing major there, no major changes from last year, or this year, I should say. Traffic engineering, that's our city engineers. Yes, now remember, a third of this, a third of the city engineer cost, we transfer from sewer and water. Nope, nope, one-third out of general, one-third out of water, one-third out of sewer. So again, we've, um, hopefully after this year, Trev, or Marcus did a great job this year. We've anticipated one more year of, of inputs into the GIS system, so we've got the, the intern there. Uh, update controllers, Raleigh's going to continue to change out the controllers from, uh, the loops to cameras, since we've had a very good success with that out of Heritage Works Wonders. And another one coming for Holly and, and Sue. And then purchase some more, update GIS equipment and software.
So then there's expenditure for the engineer to bring in some income from those other two...
Correct, yep, it shows up on the transfers in, in the general fund. Highway and streets, Raleigh. Come on up.
Well, we were talking about his band being in two thousand six, guess what you're like, lawyers? Two thousand six. And it does a lot more work with his, with yours, dude.
I, I'd agree.
Uh, yeah, I guess, I kind of want to look at, my main thing is to put that shop design, I gotta get something where I can get my equipment in. And, and we happen to work on one down south by Canton, or Lincoln County.
Where are you thinking of putting it? Where are you thinking of putting it?
Where we build the bonds in, that'd be an ideal location for me, because I can always put the, uh, shop in there, and then I can get my sander, rack built, and have a nice big, big assault dome, so I don't have to go ice stand every week.
Okay, now, let's remember the aesthetics of that, you know, we do have a lot of people living up above that area, I'm not sure they're gonna want to look at a assault dome.
Well, Brian wants to build it, uh, cast concrete, so, that's gonna add to the price though.
Let, let's see the aesthetics of that.
Yeah, it'll be under, it'll be under a dome, uh, a half moon dome, it won't just be sitting there, but, we, that's how we've got it stored right now, too.
That was the rain zone.
Well, maybe if it's concrete, they can paint a little bit more on that.
I think it's a good idea.
I do, too, I think it's a great idea, right there.
Don't need any more soccer fields, so. I know I shouldn't have said...
And then probably won't be any shopping centers over there, so, that'd be all right, just for shelves.
So I guess, yeah, the main thing I've got on there is the shop design, um, supplies, we usually carry about everything in there, nothing's really changed. There's any questions, I guess, on any of that?
So is the loader gonna be your biggest, biggest, uh, equipment thing?
Uh, that'll be the biggest piece of equipment, cost-wise.
Go down a little bit further, there's a trailer and a, that is it?
Oh, another truck?
Uh, yeah, the one ton truck that we have right now is going to be going to Better, uh, Better. So anyways, yeah, it has to go into Sioux Falls right now, because every day John has, uh, that, he's, the loader must not work, the tractor must not work, and drive it all very long, so, I mean, it is, uh, six.
I think he just told you that's a freebie, Chief, because they don't know how fast they're going.
It's all right, it has to move in over two months.
Okay.
Hasn't moved for two months, but we haven't had a chance to get it all made, or have somebody look at it. And we also replaced the turbo in that truck twice, so. Uh, I have some trailers that I own in the street, whether like my skid loader, um, roller, uh, cable mover, and stuff like that on there. I did, or one, it'll be, one of those trailers is a nineteen ninety-six, so, there you go.
You say that's fully depreciated, I guess.
I would guess, I don't know.
If you look at it, the fenders are all gone.
But are trailers eight thousand dollars?
Uh, not necessarily, you're probably...
He's bought another one, it's all like twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, it depends on how big you go, I'm trying to keep it so it's big enough for a skid loader and stuff, too, so. I mean, if you're just buying a regular car, is there, yeah, you could probably buy one or order it, but, I'm just keeping this, and we could probably knock that eight hundred down a little bit, I was just, I haven't done any pricing, but it starts, well, shoot, I, the moment you know, you know.
It's always over there spinning, Mike.
You can tell it's mine, you're trying with me.
Yeah, just, you know, we have to start cutting, but, just wait, uh, so that we've been through this April report, uh, Raleigh's still at thirty thousand percent of repairs.
We, we're trying to, um, be more aggressive on our sidewalk repairs, and get out and start replacing sidewalk.
Do we re, we assess the back?
We don't, some cities do, uh, some cities take the process, where we'll go out and inspect, send the property owner a notice, and then, uh, if they don't fix it in a certain amount of time, then the city will go in and set, uh, fix it and assess them.
Well, we know how well that goes, because you have a...
And, and that's kind of my point, you know, I, I kind of look at this as sidewalk is, we own it, the city owns it, it's, it's in the public right-of-way, it's not on their property, um, they have to shovel it, if they don't, they get in trouble. So, is it really fair to make them pay to fix it as well? Yep, and, and they pay to put it in when the house is built, you know, in those areas that we've talked about, um, that don't have sidewalk, if we do those as street projects and put sidewalk in, we will certainly special assess that to the affected property owners. But in this case, it's a city, it's a city asset, it's a city, city-owned property, um...
Nope, we've actually repaired two, uh, every, uh, one of them, we have an injury.
Yep.
I was thinking, did they do that?
And some keep in mind is, persons that do have sidewalks, a lot of them do not have eighty-two twice.
I actually, I can give us to any, because now we know it's gonna be that, right? You know, and eighty, so, I mean, I guess I'm here, but...
And then, uh, back up to Raleigh's request for the loader, we could take a look at financing that, the last one, we financed over three years, if I remember right. Worked out fairly well. So when we, when we spec that and bid it, we can, we can include that as part of the bid package. Snow removal, and I tell you this, every year it's a crapshoot. Some years are gonna be way high, some years are gonna be right on, and some are gonna be way low, unfortunately.
Yeah, we have our, our patch dragger come up and help us, so that's why, uh, the patch dragger's more important.
Yep.
That really hasn't increased any, it's, it's been saying, you know, we proposed on our supplies last year, so...
Storm drainage, we've talked a number of years about a master drainage plan, um, because we don't have one. So typically now, when a development comes in, we take a look at the drainage for that development. What we'd like to look at is regional BMPs, or regional detention facilities, so that if a developer's coming in, we can say, hey, just remember, there's gonna be, there's gonna be a regional detention pond here. Because right now, we've taken the approach that if it's a local neighborhood or development detention pond, it's, it's not ours to maintain, it's up to the, the developer. The regional ones would be ours, they'd serve a much larger area, um, but we can't really figure out where those are gonna go until we get a, a citywide drainage plan together. So that's been in there a few years, it usually is not one of the first things cut, but... It's never made the cut, let's put it that way. Yeah, I'd like to get it done. Hired repairs, we don't have anything in there now, but we need to, we need to do some maintenance on Bethany Drainage. Uh, we're looking at doing some this fall yet for the BMP, but we need to get, um, the middle of the detention pond cleaned up from scrub trees, et cetera, John's working on, on that now, to see what it's, at least a cost estimate, so we'll get that in there when, when we get it.
So I know this is, um, not on the expense side, it's on the income side, but, uh, one thing to start considering is, is in the future, putting a one dollar, two dollar storm fee on every water bill. Um, this is the prime example of how we could fund that, uh, master plan, is if we would look at doing that. If you look at communities around us, typically there's a, a two to five dollar fee for storm drainage, um, and then it's another place where we could be doing our, uh, continuous improvements, like we're looking at doing on Redwood, that would be a good funding source for that as well.
Um, street lighting is, is in the utility side anymore, weed control, then we've got transit. The transit budget is based upon the budget request we sent to the state, or ICAP sent to the state. So, I would venture to guess it will be subject to change, it always is, uh, the state share goes down and ours goes up. That's typically how that works. Animal control, the contract with Humane Society, not anticipating any changes, and then we've got our pest control mosquito spraying. We do it, we do it every other week, uh, typically, unless there's a huge inflex of mosquitoes, then we'll, we'll hit it every week. And then if we've got a big event, um, you know, like the baseball tournament or, or, um, activities in the park, we'll go down and spray then as well. That's, that's later. Nope, that is under forestry. And that's, that's fine. Oh, thanks. Well, um, I was... No, we don't, I was planning on one, you know, we talked about having a, a work session next Thursday, the twenty-third, if I remember right, and then another work session the twenty-seventh, the twenty-third, we were gonna talk about sewer utilities, but I would like to convert that into a budget work session. And then we can always have another one that week of the twenty-seventh if we need to.
Okay, so the twenty-third, we're gonna have one at six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
That's no longer sewer, that...
Yep. Yep, yep. And then another one on the twenty-seventh. Nope, that'll be a budget work session. We hope so, but you never know.
We're going through the requested now, and then we'll, we have to, kind of, from the discussion, put in the reviewed, the tweets.
Our tweaks. And since the council keeps adding stuff to the budget...
So, um, I had done a little bit of homework to kind of compare, um, how we're funding our street projects, um, and, uh, reached out to Sioux Falls and asked them, uh, for a couple examples, um, how they're funding it. And I just wanted to kind of bring this up early on in the budget discussions. Um, in this case, there's, there's three different, uh, projects here to kind of look at. There's a water main that they did on Thirty-Eighth Street, so that was basically all water. Um, and then on Dakota Avenue, that was a complete street reconstruction, and then on Twelfth Street, it was asphalt repair. So the reason I bring this up is just percentages-wise, so we can see where that money's coming from in Sioux Falls as an example, um, versus maybe how we're doing it, and, and maybe think a little bit differently. Um, and it might impact some of our general fund, where, uh, if you look at these, uh, the blue color is, is coming out of their, what they would call general fund, their taxes, where the, uh, green and purple would be coming out of their sewer or water funds. So, historically, uh, the way I understand it is most of our street projects are coming out of our water and sewer, uh, to pay for it, is that correct, Christina? Maybe you can...
Uh, just typically the, the Sullivan Circle area, and the reason, that started, I don't wanna say, early on in my career here, but, the reason that happened is, the only reason why we were digging up the streets is because the water and sewer needed to be replaced.
Sure.
And we would not have gone the streets, we not had to do the water and sewer. So that was the main reason why it was coming out of the water and sewer funds, and it was coming out of half and half.
Sure.
Um, now we're just to the point where we have to, we have to do this and allocate it versus to general water and sewer. and allocate it versus to general water and sewer.
Yep. So just so everyone guys has just three different, very different projects from Sioux Falls to kind of see how they're broke up. And if you guys have any questions on that, just let me know and I can explain it a little more in depth. But just something to kind of look at and I don't want to spend any time on it really here tonight, but just different ways that they break up their projects and how it hits their budget. And that may impact our budget, too. So just a little bit of info for everyone.
Well, and I do say, and thank you, Tim, for that. I do say, and I know we do this a lot, but we compare ourselves to Sioux Falls a lot. I don't think we should compare ourselves to Sioux Falls. Sioux Falls is like a quadruple our size practically. We need to start comparing ourselves to other cities our size. And we compare ourselves to Sioux Falls for everything. And I'm not just saying this, but for everything, that's just not fair to us, I don't feel, that we need to be comparing to other cities our own size. So just my two cents worth of that.
And just, just a quick question. We've got the two applicants for the vacant position. When would you like to meet them? Would you like to do that Thursday before the briefing meeting? Or Monday before the council meeting? That's fine. So it'll have to be before, so it'll have to be at five? Monday. That'll be, it'll be on the agenda for Monday. Yep, this Thursday's a briefing meeting. So if you want to do it Thursday, we'll have to do it at five, because afterwards is Planning and Zoning Commission. Thursday, the fourteen, fifteen, sixteenth.
Now we got five o'clock?
Yep. Yeah, that's, that's the only issue. No, half hour. Briefing meeting starts at five-thirty. Otherwise, I'd say we could do it at five-thirty on Monday. It's, it's up to you, whatever you. Okay, that's fine. Okay. I will contact them tomorrow.
Let me go, let me do it again. Any other business coming for the council? Motion by Hausman, second by Clark to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? We need Larry back.